Rainy day, Jane.
Welcome everyone to the Wednesday, May 21st Board of Commissioners meeting. Will you rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance? Commissioner Scott Hanson, please.
My question is that I would like to follow this company tonight. And we ask for your guidance and wisdom in the decisions that you need to make for the county. And we've got tough decisions to make, Lord, and so we plead all the wisdom we can live up to. And by the way, pray that you'll be with each one that speaks tonight. Give them clarity in deciding what they have. And pray for our residents of Eaton County that have struggled here in the last week with storms and everything too, Lord. And pray that we do just do our land, Lord. And do what's tonight.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Art.
Yes.
Commissioner Peak. Commissioner Haskell.
Here.
Commissioner Pearl Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Here.
Commissioner Mudry.
Here.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Droscha.
Here.
Commissioner Toomey.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Christensen.
Present.
Commissioner Holmes. Commissioner Barber.
Here.
Chairman Ma.
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move the agenda?
Support. Agenda has been moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have the minutes from April 16th.
Support.
Minutes have been moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up, we have our first of two. Oh, no, that's communications. Excuse me. We're not living in public comment. All right, first up, next up, we have communications. We have one from Genesee County, resolution recognizing May as Jewish Heritage Month. And we also have a City of Grand Ledge letter in reference to their Parks Community grant application. And that's in your packet. And next up, we have one retiree resolution of Kathy Brooks. Would I have a motion to move that? Moved by Commissioner Barber, supported by Commissioner Pearl Wright. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Kathy in chief, Judge Cunningham, would you come to the podium, please?
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and members of the public. Tonight's a bittersweet occasion. Tonight, we are going to recognize a long-term county employee, Ms. Kathy Brooks. She has served the citizens of Eaton County for 27 years, which is more than half of her life. After Kathy graduated from Western Michigan, she came to Eaton County and worked as a probation officer, an intensive probation officer, which means she worked with the very difficult cases. She served in that position for over 17 years, during which time she helped hundreds of people get their life back on track. Kathy loved her role in helping people, and she had that wonderful combination of compassion and accountability. She was excellent in that position, which led her to be promoted to the Director of Community Corrections in 2015. That's when I really got to know Kathy, both professionally and on a personal level, because we worked together. As the Director of the Community Corrections, Kathy brought the same dedication, passion, and accountability to our numerous programs, understanding that by helping people deal with their addiction, she was not just helping them, but she helped their families. She brought back moms, and dads, and brothers, and sisters, and aunts, and uncles. And that compassion, and that support, and that loyalty she has, I personally observed, she brings to her marriage, to her husband Scott, where'd you go? Who will be, they'll be married 19 years soon. And also to her friends and all the employees here at Eaton County. So it was not a hard decision to promote Kathy to the Deputy Court Administrator. Little did she know, and actually Amy or I, that we began our journey in the administration when COVID hit. Now, for anybody that was in any type of administration when that happened, you know how difficult that was. We were getting different directions, literally daily, on what we were required to do, what we had to tell employees to do. It was very difficult. And yet, the Eaton County Courts never closed. We did not close. One day, we kept working, and in large part, to the things that Kathy did and helped with. It really was, it took a team, and it took keeping a positive attitude and a lot of laughter. And I know it wouldn't have happened without her being there. It was really, really critical. So now, she's going to move on. She's going to go from helping all of us here at Eaton County to a position where she's going to advocate for the elderly. So she is going to bring that compassion, that dedication, and that drive to standing up for the people who are oftentimes the most vulnerable, right? Elderly people who are in care, that maybe they don't have family or friends to watch out for them, and they need to make sure that somebody is making sure they're taken care of. And I know she'll do that great. So, thank you.
Thanks, Judge.
Well, I didn't, I didn't get to be around you much, other than these types of meetings, but I'm going to say I'm going to miss you, because there are some people in your life that when you talk to them, you can be yourself. You can be real, because you're real. And I thank you for that. It's always a pleasure talking with you, and I'm going to miss you, as we all will. So I'm going to read the resolution. Eaton County Board of Commissioners, resolution of appreciation for Kathleen Brooks. District, excuse me, District Court, May 21st, 2025. Whereas Kathleen Brooks will be retiring from Eaton County on May 30th, 2025, and whereas Kathy Brooks in the District Court as an intensive probation officer beginning January 20th, 1998, a long time ago, and then a Director of Community Corrections until January 11th, 2015. And whereas Kathy was promoted to the Deputy Trial Court Administrator in 2020 and is retiring with more than 27 years of service. And whereas Kathy has provided dedicated and honorable service to the residents and employees of Eaton County, and whereas the Eaton County Board of Commissioners seeks to recognize and express appreciation for Kathy's years of public service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners expresses its sincere gratitude for the years of exceptional service Kathy provided to Eaton County, and be it further resolved that this resolution of appreciation and support be duly recorded and attached to the permanent records of the county on this 21st day of the month of May in the year 2025. Thank you so much.
I haven't told the story a lot of how I came here, but I was doing an internship in Portage, Michigan, because I'm from Kalamazoo. And there was an internship that, you know, I didn't take the internship originally. So somebody called me and was like, "Do you want to do an internship in Portage?" And I was like, "No, as a probation officer." And I said, "No, I'm good," you know, "And those you have to apply for and interview." And I said, "No, no, thank you." My brother called me, and he's like, "What are you thinking? Why, they called you to do an interview or do an internship. Why wouldn't you do it?" And I'm like, "I don't want to do it." They called again. "We'd really like you, we've heard about you, we would like you to do an internship at the Portage, you know, probation apartment." I was like, "Not interested. I'm good. Like, I just don't want to do it. I'm not interested." The third time they called, and they were like, "We're sorry we keep bothering you." And I was like, "Okay," because I have very strong faith. I was like, "Okay, God, so I guess if that's what you want me to do, I guess I'll do it." So I went and interned at Portage, and then that court administrator knew a court administrator in here. And then a job came open here, and I got a great recommendation, and then I started my position here. So I've always based the reason that I'm here on my faith, and that I'm here for a reason. And I was talking to my husband, and I was like, "How, how do you put 27 years into words?" I don't, I don't know how to do it. I don't know how to put 27 years into the words. But I think about the number of people in our community that I've met with. And I mean, it's all of you, it's people that have come to the courthouse, that have been before the judges, it's my coworkers. I have been blessed to meet so many amazing people in our community. And just because any person walks through that front door, it doesn't mean anything other than they're just here to see us. And I have just met the greatest people. I always thought to myself, if I could just change one life, just, just one life, if I could do it just once, you know, then my life surely has been worthwhile. And I know that it's been more than one, because we get phone calls. "Thank you for helping me. Thank you for, thank you for putting me in jail. Thank you for the accountability." Being a probation officer and being in treatment courts, that was one of my biggest passions. And when you're a probation officer, you're out doing home calls. So I got to work alongside with the police officers, and I was at the Red Robin shooting, right? So up in Delta, they have the shooting. I'm ducking down in a car, watching my friends get shot at as they're, you know, going after suspects that have murdered people. I have gone to murder suicides where there's a mother and a father that are deceased, and a police officer is walking the child coming through the woods, running, blocking them, just talking to her calmly, so she doesn't see her parents that are deceased. I mean, the things that I have seen and the things, I just, I cannot say enough, all of the great people that I work with and all the blessings that I've had. One of my, the biggest passion that I've had is working with treatment courts, is working with drug courts, being a probation officer. And it's, it's something I've always truly believed in. And back in, I don't know, 2015, maybe, I just, I wrote a small, just a few words about things that I've seen that I just wanted to read to you beforehand. The few words that I'd like to say. I have seen a mother cease using meth and crave time with her children. I have seen an alcoholic who slowly commits suicide by continuing to drink, yearning for sobriety, and fight to live one day at a time. I've seen treatment agencies reach out to those in need, giving those with no hope a place to seek and find hope. I've seen judges with great compassion. I've seen prosecutors with great compassion, law enforcement with great compassion. I believe in people, and we provide encouragement when some have never had any, nor have they ever believed in themselves. I have had defendants die. I have watched them lose everything, including their dignity, their self-respect, their family, and their freedom. But most importantly, all of us here, we have seen them live. And I want you to hear me say that we have seen them live, every single person, we've seen them live. We've seen them succeed, become productive members of our society, be reunited with their children and their family and their loved ones. I have seen them learn to love themselves again. And my dedication here has been to helping people and helping the county and serving people, so I can see people live. And it has been truly an honor to serve our community, to serve the board, every person that I have worked with. It has been an honor every single day, and I am just blessed, humbled, and thankful. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, now we're up to limited comment. If you'd like to approach the board, please limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Messengers. Drew Marks, Sunfield Township. Missed somebody tonight. Approximately a year ago, there was someone came up and they spoke, and they wanted to move duplexes to be use of right in residential one areas. It was passed by this commission. It's now in the zoning ordinances committee that they want to have limited ag have duplexes as use of right. Now, they're going to revisit that, because in limited ag, purpose is for limited, for single-family homes, as it was in residential one areas, but they passed it, as did you. Take offense a little bit, because Sunfield Township, which is represented by one commissioner, which represents one quarter of the county, has one vote. Most of that area is limited ag. Most people I talked to out in Sunfield Township are against duplexes in agricultural areas, limited ag areas. So I'm here today, because I think it's going to come to you in the future. And I'd like to see you vote on that, or not vote personally, because I know there's nine commissioners here that have their own ordinances that do not adhere to the county ordinance. So do you vote, to vote on that and not have to live under that ordinance, I think is wrong. I think that needs to be addressed by the commissioners. How to do with, if nothing else, maybe abstain from voting, because if it doesn't affect you and your district or where you represent, you shouldn't be voting on something, I believe. So I'm here today just to tell you that's coming, and to say that I'm against use of right in limited ag areas to put duplexes out in agricultural areas in this county. I come from an area represented by one commissioner, again, like I said, as one vote, represents one quarter of the county. So, just, it's coming. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Dave Purcell. I live here in Eaton County and moved here in 1992. I had the privilege to come here back in January and raise some questions about the millage. And with new people coming in. And odd situation, but it was. For 38 years, I had the privilege of being a college professor. I always thought my role was to have the people in my class leave smarter when they left than when they got there. And in some ways, they got something for their tuition money. I thought that was important. The thing that happened on May 6th is a need to listen. Can't go backwards. This is not an easy job, what you got. If it was easy, anybody could do it, and I don't believe that's possible. But, but my concern is, and I had comments to make that weren't as positive as I hope I can do tonight. I think every one of you are here with a solid heart and trying to do your best job. But, but it's really important to listen and to learn and not do it again. There's nothing worse than missing an exam question on a midterm, and by God, the guy gives it to, it's on the final, and you, you miss it again. That, that hurts. And I think, I take a deep breath and say, "You got a tough job," but it does need to be addressed, that need to learn from that experience, which was expensive. I want my money to be used for the best possible things for this community, and, and every penny of it. And I'm not ashamed to say it. That's all I can do, and, and just hope that it was a learning experience, and that we can learn from it, and spend our time and resources where we get more out of it. Thank you very, very much.
Anyone else?
My name is Juanita K. Purcell. That was my husband. I live at 1386 East Clinton Trail and have for 33 years. In January, we both met with Sheriff Reich and Commissioner Nicole Christensen, and told them we believed the millage, the special millage was not going to work. Neither one of them would listen to lowly property owners and taxpayers. The voters said no in November, and again in May. On May 5th, we requested to the county clerk through the Freedom of Information Act, the total cost of the special election. To date, we've received no reply, even though Public Act 15.231 requires a response within five days. It's been 15 so far, so that kind of speaks for itself. In January, we informed this board that there were other revenue sources that did not include more taxes from property owners. Marijuana tax revenue is coming to Charlotte from, for $175,000. Eaton County is also getting $175,000 from the sales of marijuana in this county. Every property owner has their SEV, state equalized valuation, raised every year on their residence. Never goes down, it never stays the same. It raises every year. State Representative Angela Whitwer has requested line items, which are one-time grants from the state budget, $10 million to upgrade the outdated Eaton County drains, $2.5 million for a new Eaton County animal control building, which is what they wanted this millage for. Now they're trying to get it through the state, which is a correct, better way to get it than, than taxing the taxpayers. I believe the board should consider paying back the money that they spent to put on this election. Delta Township's done the right thing by canceling their fireworks. They don't have the money to do it and provide it safely. People can go elsewhere to see their fireworks. We saw a fireworks show at Beacon Sales on Thursday night, and it wasn't planned. A fireworks trailer blew up, and it was quite a sight. Tell me, it was. It took the fire department over an hour to get trucks to that site, and they only just come down Lansing Road. I realize it's a volunteer, volunteer fire department, but it was pretty much exploded itself out by the time the fire trucks got there, but they rolled every single truck they had, including ones from Benton Township. So it was quite a thing. Thanks for listening to me.
Good evening. Nicole Dungy, property owner, Eaton County. I'm here tonight to speak on the, well, to talk for the voiceless, the animals. We've had multiple animal emergencies, whether it's horses in the roadway, cows running astray, dogs everywhere. Of course, we're post-pandemic, where everybody got an animal over the pandemic, and some are not caring for them, or they're letting them loose, whatever have you. And nobody's there to answer the call. Has everyone gone home? I'm just utterly confused. When you look at the other counties that are nearby for Tri-County, whether it's Clinton, Ingham, everybody has their officers working. They didn't close the doors because the millage didn't pass. And to me, it's just unacceptable. When I call my congressman, he knows nothing about the doors being closed. So I'm not sure who made the decision to close the doors, but it seems like we have state and federal regulations that we have to abide by as a county and make sure that our animal control officers are working. Apparently, there is only six dogs in the county animal control facility on the day the millage didn't pass on May 6th. I don't know what's happened with those six animals. It seems there's only one person caring for them. The information that I've received is coming from dispatch, from like a memorandum that they were reading to me over the phone. So I think that I'm speaking truthfully here by saying that the county animal control facility has been shut down. My question is, who made the decision to close it, and when is it going to reopen? I have a friend here speaking on behalf of the animals as well.
My name's Connie Kapuja. I'm a member, I'm a resident of the county, have been for over 25 years. I have done a whole lot of work in rescue. I have volunteered at animal shelters. I actually do a free service to all the communities if people need me. I provide lost dog searching and live trapping to get the dogs back home. I don't charge a fee at all for my services. A lot of it comes out of my own pocket. I've assisted in transporting dogs out of shelters to rescues, so they can continue their life. What I'd like to say is, I, I'd like to express my concern over what might or might happen to the animal control for Eaton County. There are several areas that need to be considered before any final decision is made. While we all know the special millage failed, I believe with some community input and creative thinking, we can come up with some ideas to continue this service to the county residents. However, that means everyone on this board will need to keep an open mind to the variety of ideas that may come forth and be willing to explore them. I understand the shelter is understaffed at this time, and there is some need of maintenance to the building. However, I do not believe that this situation cannot find a workable solution. I'm currently researching other Michigan counties that are rather similar to Eaton County. I've been reviewing their budgets, reading revenues, expenditures, their staffing, MDAH annual shelter, annual reporting, which is required by the state, to see how other counties compare to Eaton. I'm also contacting those counties to see what they have done to be able to stay open and operational, operational, to serve their residents, not just mandated services, but with potential additional services such as vaccinations and microchipping services, spay neuters, hours of operation availability to the public, fee structures, and more. I offer to all of you my time and research and any additional information I can help provide in order to maintain at least a minimum of animal control and shelter services. I believe that without animal control services to keep the people and animals safe, Eaton County will be putting residents and animals at risk. If we come together to seek information and discuss the situation with a goal of maintaining animal control services, I believe we can find an avenue to providing those services, even if minimal, for all of this county. I have different questions that I'd like to propose to whoever it is. to whoever it is that I can work with. But I'd like to say I ask that you take advantage of my offer to research, compare, provide information of how other counties continue to serve their residents and animals. And I know there are others that share my concern and would be willing to give input. Please accept my offer, and their offer as well, to open up and work with this community to continue serving the residents and the animals through animal control. Thank you. And I do have a beginning packet, but until I get more information, I will... I'll put it all together, and if anybody would like to review it, I'm willing to work with any of the committee members. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yep. Good afternoon, commissioners, or good evening. Ryan Wilkinson, your emergency manager for your small but mighty Eaton County Emergency Management Office. A little problem that we had last Thursday into Friday, obviously EF1 tornado that touched down here within the county. Two tornado warnings issued, one at 10:59 PM up in the Sunfield-Mulican area. They didn't produce anything. It was all just radar indicated, followed by a tornado warning about 19 minutes later that did produce an EF1 tornado around 100 miles per hour winds, about one... or excuse me, about 250 yards wide. Traveled about 15 and a half miles throughout just north of Charlotte here, up into Delta Township, and crossed over into the Grosse Beck neighborhood of Lansing Township. When you start seeing that, and you're talking with your National Weather Service partners, kind of live as things are happening, and you start seeing, you know, debris signature in this area, and it says Eaton County, you kind of get that lump in your throat. But then you kind of put your head down, you know it's time to go to work, right? And that's what we did. We went out immediately to try and see what damage we could assess, because you have to tell your community impacts and your story within 72 hours, basically, to determine if you're going to take those next steps in terms of state and federal assistance. So really difficult to do, at least in those early hours, just given, A, just it was dark, but B, you had trees, wires, everything all in your roadways. So as soon as first light came, myself, Ella, Ingham County Emergency Management, we took the path of the tornado, basically traveled through the Benton Township area all the way up into Delta Township, trying to assess what our damage was, what are our impacts, how are we going to tell our story if it escalates? Long story short, and I'll give a much more in-depth brief at the Public Safety Committee meeting. Long story short, you know, in consultation with other local partners that were also affected, in consultation with the state of Michigan, we're just not meeting the damage assessment numbers that we think we need to escalate anything. Certainly not at the federal level for what we call individual assistance or assistance to homeowners for uninsured or underinsured losses. Just not seeing it, and we're not getting it on the public side either, public assistance damages. There's a program at the state level through the Disaster and Emergency Contingency Fund that could also take a look at that, but we're talking with the state, and we're just not meeting that either. So we have all the data we need. We have it packaged the way we need, if that were to change. But right now, we're just not seeing it. I just wanted to provide you that update. And we'll have a much more in-depth kind of presentation at the next Public Safety Committee meeting in early June. But thank you for giving me a few minutes. I'll get back to you.
Thank you, Ryan. Does anyone else like to approach the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Next up, we have the committee reports and resolutions. And first up, we have Public Works and Planning Committee with Commissioner Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met on May 7th, and I thought we had a good meeting, and I have three action items tonight from that. My first one is a resolution to approve the text amendment to the zoning ordinance. And I seen our zoning, planning and zoning here. If we need any explanation, but I move that.
Been moved by Commissioner Barber, supported by Commissioner Brian Dorosha. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried.
All right. Second, is the Material Management Planning Committee appointment. I move the appointment of Michael Gray to a four-year term, ending in December 31st of 2029, to the Materials Management Planning Committee.
Moved by Commissioner Dorosha, or, um, excuse me, Commissioner Barber, and supported by Commissioner Christensen. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Then my last item is a resolution to approve the 2025 Cycle 3 Park Community Grants. The money that... The money that funds these grants comes from the County Parks Millage, so I move that.
Moved by Commissioner Barber, supported by Commissioner Toomey. Any questions or comments? Yes?
I was going back through the minutes and the meeting, and I couldn't find the... It might be on me, about the Grand Ledge requested for their park, and why it's not included in this.
So are you talking about the letter that was in the packet?
Yeah, they have the letter, and they requested funds from the millage, and it's not included in this list here, and I was wondering why.
Well, I think is the list of those that were accepted.
Approved.
That were accepted.
Scoring Committee that reviews all applications, and then the projects are scored based on the metrics, and then a decision's made. So these are the communities that were being recommended by that scoring commission and Public Works and Human Services.
Right. I was wondering why it wasn't recommended.
It didn't get awarded?
Yeah, why it wasn't included.
The reason being is the board saw... I mean, I don't remember how many applications we saw, but... 12, yeah. Well, we have the Parks Director here.
Hello, everyone. Yes, we had a total of 12 applications that came in, and after reviewing the 12, excuse me, Applications Review Committee, selected their, you know, their top applicants in the projects that they see that could fit the $400,000 we were allocating, and Grand Ledge did... They were one of the 12, but they were not one of the ones that were initially approved at that time. Since then, Grand Ledge has approached. I did call, and I spoke with the communities, specifically the four communities that we did not approve, and then the remaining eight. Just to give a heads up about what the board will be presenting here today. And since then, the city of Grand Ledge has sent us some emails and a letter that you see here about some of the funds that they have, since the review committee has met, some funds that they have been able to secure for their total project. And that's where we're at today. And that is what the purpose of the letter was, was to see, I guess, what the board would vote on if they could tell us if they received more funds.
Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right. That completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next up, we have Public Safety Committee with Commissioner Holmes.
Good evening. We met on May 1st this year, 2025. Have one action item, a Community Corrections and Advisory Board appointment. And I move that.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Holmes, supported by Commissioner Haskell. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And that would conclude my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. And next, we have Ways and Means Committee with Commissioner Brian Dorosha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, our Ways and Means Committee met, and we had a long roster. But we have action items before us this evening. First is item number one on our agenda. It's a resolution to authorize application for inigent defense grant. And I would move that.
Moved by Commissioner Dorosha, supported by Commissioner Pearl Wright.
And I don't know if we have anyone here from the court to address that this evening.
Nope.
No?
It would be the public defender's office. Unless you have a question related to the funding.
I didn't know if they wanted to address this at all.
All right. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And then the next three resolutions, I'm going to ask Chris Garrison and Brandy Miller to come forward if they're here. So if you have any questions, you can direct questions to them. But the first resolution is to amend the planning and zoning fee schedule.
Are you asking a question?
I'm going to move it, and then if anybody has any questions.
All right. So we're going to move it by Commissioner Dorosha, seconded by Commissioner Barber. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Toomey.
Yeah, I just had a question. Does this... What Ways and Means reported out, does this remain unchanged from the committee before that?
It does.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Our next item is a resolution to approve intergovernmental agreement... Excuse me, agreements for planning and zoning services. And that I will move this also.
Moved by Commissioner Dorosha, supported by Commissioner Haskell. Questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is a resolution to approve Public Act 116, Farmland and Open Space Development Rights Agreements. And I would move this resolution also.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Dorosha, supported by Commissioner Hanson. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Next item is taxable evaluation reports. Tim is here, if anyone has any questions, and I would move... Well, I would move this report.
Moved by Commissioner Dorosha, supported by Commissioner Haskell. Any questions or comments? Tim, do you want to comment on it?
Yeah. Good evening. This is the 4046 report, the taxable value report. Values went up 4.47% this year. So that was a little bit better than average. That was good news. And then we also had the 4028, which is the Headley rollback report. We did show a Headley rollback of .9986 for the county after Renaissance Zone was subtracted and disabled veterans. Most of the local units did have a rollback this year because of the low Consumer Price Index. Delta Township was one of the ones that did not have a rollback, as well as Anita and Roxanne. So that was pretty typical. So the tax rate for the county did go down, but it was a little bit less than expected. So our new county allocated tax rate is 5.2023 now. But that was good news, that the rollback was not as much as we expected. So any questions on these reports?
Yeah, Commissioner Dorosha.
Tim, if you don't mind, could you briefly explain the difference between taxable value increase and a tax increase?
Sure. The taxable value increase does not equal what your actual tax increase is, because by state law, you have to look at the Headley calculations every year. If the taxable value overall in a local jurisdiction, township, city, or village goes up more than inflation, once you include new construction in that calculation, then you have to roll back or reduce your tax rate. Originally, in 1978, Eaton County was collecting 5.5 mills, and now it's been reduced down to the 5.2023. So it's been reduced quite a bit over those years. I did just calculate that Eaton County is now losing, due to Headley rollbacks, approximately $1.5 million per year in tax revenue, because of the Headley reductions. And also, when you look at your individual property, obviously, that's a little bit different than the total for the township or city as well.
All right. Thank you. Good explanation. Any other questions for Tim? Thank you, Tim. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six under Ways and Means, resolution to amend state grant for additional support for the prosecutor's office use and framework for funding. And if Doug Lloyd is here, I would move this.
Moved by Commissioner Dorosha, supported by Commissioner Pearl Wright. Any questions, comments? You want to explain what this is, prosecutor?
I can, Chairman. Thank you very much, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Doug Lloyd, your Eaton County Prosecutor. Basically, what we're looking at here is... To give you a little background and history for those of you who weren't at Ways and Means last week, the MIDC, which is what you just voted on the grant earlier in one of the resolutions by Commissioner Dorosha, was created in order to make sure that there is a defender's office and that defendants are adequately represented. That is money that you pay each year a basis of, and the rest is paid for by the state. And so they are easily able to ask for increases whenever they want, because that money is not coming from you, the county, the commissioners. Rather, it is coming through the state legislature itself. Whereas I, as your county prosecutor and my office, all funding comes through you. So I am one of 33 departments begging for crumbs in order to do mandated services. And so we began several years ago, even before I was president of the Prosecutors Association, requesting the legislature to start equalizing the playing field. If you were going to fund the MIDC with state money, you should be doing the same and not requiring us to rely on you, the county, to keep us afloat, because let's be honest, I have been coming here for over a decade telling you the same thing, that I am understaffed, underpaid, and overworked. So the process began the first year where the 10 most dangerous cities within the state and thereby within those counties were funded by the state legislature. $10 million. The second year, it was raised up to the 15 most dangerous cities and respectively their counties. Fortunately, during that time, the two appropriation chairs happened to be our state rep and our state senator. And I did what any reasonable elected official would do. I continually called them, I continually complained, I continually kissed whatever ring I needed to, and advised them that, you know, while fortunately, at that time, because we had law enforcement, we were not one of the most 15 dangerous cities within, you know, the state, we should be receiving funding as well. And so a carve-out was given for Eaton County for $250,000 for the Eaton County Prosecutor's Office, specifically designated for that. A one-time funding. In reality, with the current budget that the governor has put out, the funding for those 15 counties, as well as myself, has been cut back out. It's not sure whether the legislature will bring it back again. So this is a one-time amount. And when I looked at that one-time amount and with the two millages that have occurred, I've already been down two attorneys and two legal assistants for over a year. Y'all are well aware of that, because I am here every month letting you know that. I have watched attorneys and legal assistants leave to go to other counties and to the state in order to receive more money and work less. But yet, I have dedicated individuals within my office who have stayed. So with my chief assistant, Chris Anderson, and I, we decided to sit down and figure out what would be the best way to use this money. We have, and I've discussed with this, with you before, we moved to CARPEL, which is our information system. It's where our cases are stored electronically. We've done that with about 80 other counties across the state. It's what our association moved away from ACT to this program, hopefully to provide more transparency, which I think you've seen if you sit on the Public Safety Committee when I come in with our numbers. One of the things that we can add is a module that allows for better contact with our victims. And so we're using some of the money to pay for that subscription, understanding that hopefully by the time that we get past the two years that we can do on that, we'll be able to adjust our budgets to incorporate it into our budget and continue with it. able to adjust our budgets to incorporate it into our budget and continue with it. The rest of it, I made the decision that I have employees that were willing to stand by me and go, Doug, you know, we realize we're down two attorneys and two legal assistants, but we'll suck up and do the work, and spend the extra time, even though we don't receive overtime, and that means we'll work nights and weekends, because we don't want to see anybody else hired and then get told they have to leave. And they've done that, and they've stayed here, and they've worked hard for me, and they come in every day, and I've listened to them cry, I've listened to them get mad, I've listened to them cuss, I've watched them walk away from work exhausted, and I've watched them walk back in the next morning to do it all over again. So, my chief assistant and I made the determination that the best way we could use this money would be for retention bonuses. And this will be happening during this fiscal year, while all of our offices are fully funded. And I say that, because I think it's important, because while it's called a grant, it's really not, because what I'm submitting to the Treasury will be used by the end of September. But I think it's important to acknowledge that I was given a week's extension. Well, this grant was actually, or as it's called a grant, was actually in the budget from last year, but it's been held up because of a word that has made the other 15 counties not actually receive their money yet. I finally got tired of waiting and went to Treasury and got them to release ours, but then they gave me two weeks in order to give the information back. We got a week's extension, and with the help of Controller Sobe, Ben Dawson, Melissa, sitting in the back, hanging with the cool kids, they spent a portion of a day, because that's all the time we had, getting the numbers that we needed, and without their help, I would not have been successful in putting that information, which is now in front of you, in order to get it in front of Ways and Means. So, you know, they didn't spend a whole day, they didn't, you know, have to do that. Fortunately, they're very smart and capable, and you're lucky to have them, but they helped me, and we were able to get it in front of Chairman Derosa of Ways and Means, and here we are. The only addition that I would mention is that, obviously, this has to be turned in with your approval and the signing of Chairman of the Board tomorrow. If any changes were to occur, we're asking for just the ability to make those changes without having to come in front of you again, and then you don't have to listen to me. And so, you know, we would request that you approve the motion that's on the floor, as well as the amendment that allows it to be changed if Treasury requires. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Commissioner Haskell.
As far as changes go, could you foresee what they may request of you, or do you think it's good how it sits?
Sure, I mean, the biggest thing may be if they don't like, you know, how we've laid out our numbers, of how, you know, we've broken it down in regards to the retention amounts for the class of the individual, you know, that it's a one-time payment. There is an actual wording that is similar to what has been used with the unions before, that we will provide the money in September, and with that, you know, the employees will sign on with a retention agreement, that they will remain for at least six months. If they don't, then that money will be prorated out. So, if they didn't like the wording of our retention, while it's been approved previously, and it's, you know, was created by the Controller and Deputy Controller Dawson, you know, if they didn't like that, you know, that could be something where we may need to rework the wording. If they didn't like the numbers itself, you know, I could see that we had conversations in regards to the modules, so I don't see the, and it is something where you can use the money over a two-year period, so I don't see the issue of the module of being a problem, but those would be, you know, where I consider it. I don't really, when I had my initial conversations with them two weeks ago, nothing that I said to them made them scream, oh, heck no.
So, nothing that would make you think that the entire intent of this would happen?
No, and it is, in reality, it's a, you know, I have to do something in order for us to receive the money. So, they're not giving us the money first and then me doing something. So, there is that, there is that aspect there, that I'm going to have to do the right thing before I get paid.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Prosecutor Lloyd? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Prosecutor.
Item number seven, resolution to authorize issuance of capital improvement bonds. Ben, would you like to address this, please? And I would move this resolution.
Moved by Commissioner Derosha, supported by Commissioner Haskell. Any questions, comments?
We do have Steve Mann from Miller Canfield, our bond counsel, and Dale Days with PFM, one of our financial advisors here as well, for her questions.
Anybody have any questions? Nope, seeing none, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight, resolution to adopt a six-year capital improvements program, and I would move this resolution as well.
Moved by Commissioner Derosha, supported by Commissioner Haskell. Got a theme going here. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine, resolution to approve fiscal year 2425 budget amendments. I would move this resolution.
Moved by Commissioner Derosha, supported by Commissioner Haskell. Any questions or comments? Yeah, Commissioner Haskell.
Because this came up in public comment, I think it's fair to mention that this is the first time that we've seen marijuana funds come in through a budget amendment, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so just one of the, for transparency's sake, it's not, these aren't funds we've been getting for years and years, this is new.
No, and we could have one additional payment next year, because the fourth operation that's in Charlotte would come onboard.
Okay.
So, we would receive potential revenue from that as well.
So, are you suggesting that would be a one-time thing, or is that?
No, it's ongoing, but obviously, these are pass-throughs through fees, licenses, through the state of Michigan, so we, it's not revenue we can rely upon, and we don't know how long every shop would be open, right?
Sure, okay.
Good question. Any others? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, Mr. Chair, we need to pay our bills, so I would move the claims and purchases.
Moved by Commissioner Derosha, supported by Commissioner Pink. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
The last item on my agenda is that we will meet, excuse me, Ways and Means Committee will meet on May the 30th.
Yes, and that is going to be that Friday morning, 9:00 AM, and it will be a full board meeting, so, and that is the meeting we need to have a long discussion, so if you can make it, for those of you who are not on the committee, please, it's for everyone, I mean, it's not a Ways and Means Committee, it's full board, so, everyone, please, show up and bring your ideas, because we need to start making some decisions here at the county, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Derosha. Next up, we have Administrator's Report.
Okay, as Commissioner Derosha said, we are working on the budget. Last Friday, tough meeting to start talking about the budget and changes that we'll be making, so we provided from my office cuts that would need to be done to stabilize the fund balance, because that's what we really need to do. I encourage everyone in the public, I encourage any commissioner that did not see it, to watch that meeting. I actually went through and gave a very detailed, I can get more detailed, but we would be here for a couple of days, into what we're looking at, potentially looking at. We, every month, continue, and now it'll be probably twice a month or more, go through and modify projections, because, like I said, we go through as close to actual as we can based on where our employment stats are at the time, demographics of our employment. So, please take a look at that, please start thinking about it. On the 30th, please come to us with questions. Send them to me now, as commissioners, as the public, you know, should be involved in the process. Again, do the same, bring questions, we welcome that. During the meeting, we started and provided the departments with giving us mandated versus non-mandated services. What that means is either the state is mandating them, or they're not mandated in any fashion. They could be by board resolution, the board could rescind something, could be by ordinance, which could be rescinded as well. What happened during that, and I think it's important to know, when you give something like that to elected officials and department heads, their instinct is to protect what they've been doing. There is not anyone in this county that does not think that every part of their office, every component, every service is not mandated, because that's a word, that they believe they're mandated to provide the services. So, you're going to go through and you're going to read that. We'll do another exercise where we actually look at state mandates versus an ordinance. We'll go through that, departments will work with us, but please be patient, public and commissioners, as to the reactions you're going to get from departments. You know, we're all trying to save what we feel is our important services. And I will say, as the administrator, I don't think we do anything that's not important. I've been here for years, I really do see that. I'll give an example from tonight. We were lucky enough to hear from Kathy Brooks, who is the deputy trial court administrator right now. She ran the specialty courts. Did you hear her statements? Very impactful, what they do and who they've saved, what they've seen. You see judges who have emotions when they're on the bench and they're dealing with these people. They want to help, they want to work with them. So, that's the example, and what you should want from your public servants. You're getting that, and I say that to the public, too. But we still want to hear as to what you feel you don't think we need to do. That's important, very important to me, to my staff, and I believe to every elected official and department that we have. I could go on about all the services. I will mention what the two individuals who came up and talked about animal control. We talked about animal control throughout our millage proposals. That was important. I think about it, I have animals, I've always had animals. I want them protected, I want people protected from animals that, you know, may cause harm. Our deputies and police officers throughout the county, state police, are not qualified in the way we need to provide animal control services. It's a specialty. It's not you just throw somebody at it, it's a specialized field. And we've had the best animal control department, as minimal as it has been, was down to two officers, we are down to one. The shelter is open. Kristi Grunald, who runs it, lead animal control officer, is doing everything she can. You'll never meet a more dedicated person, passion for animals, you'll never experience that, in any other county, but please, bring us your thoughts, like you mentioned, because that's how government should function. It's for the public. I try really, really hard here, and commissioners will tell you this when I talk, I'll lean on something, and it's very touching to me or frustrating to me, but I really try to steer clear of making a statement that says, this is my position. Now, I may have said that with animal control, but I do believe that. But I do try to do that. So, tonight, you may hear from me a few things that you think I'm taking a stance on, but I'm at that point in my career here that if you don't like it, and I say that respectfully to my board, I can't sugarcoat anything that's going on anymore, I don't want to. I think it's necessary for the commissioners, for the public, to hear about things, because we're going through a time that we've never experienced. We've had cuts, we've had issues where we've, you know, lacked revenue, this is like nothing you've ever seen, and it's ongoing, and it's been going on for years. This isn't new. We may have new commissioners, but they did their research before they ran. They know and knew what they were getting into, they had a passion, they want to make changes, now they're stuck with a really bad situation. I've been here for years. I decided to stay. I will say it when Commissioner Barbara Rogers came into my office and said, is this a job you would want? And originally, I was like, no way, I don't, you know, I would never want to do that, I'm going to retire as your deputy controller administrator, that's good enough for me. But when she asked me that question, it was like a light bulb. Yeah, why not? I have a lot to say, I have things that I couldn't say before, and you've been hearing from me. So, I've been very open, the two and a half years that I've been in this position. I, again, like I said, I don't sugarcoat things. I get mad, I get frustrated, I think departments and elected officials have all heard from me. I challenge people, we look at the budget, we don't take things lightly, we're doing a lot, and I know over the years, these two and a half years, that I've said things that may frustrate commissioners, and I appreciate you, Chairman Mott, because you have heard a lot of things, you know, in our meetings. I'm a little bit animated sometimes, so, everybody has put up with me on that. But that's my job, is to give you information, is to explain our situation, and is to talk for the departments, the elected officials, as a liaison to you. I'm here for you, and I will tell you that I know more about this county than anyone here today. I've been here for a long time, a long, long time, 38 years. So, the frustration that I have, and I understand the public frustration, 100%, please, don't think that I don't, as the administrator, think that we have a problem, that we've created a problem over time. I think we all know that, I think the board sitting here today knows that. This goes back years. We're not talking five years, we're talking decades, because we've just kept going and going and going, that's what we've done. It's not a good thing. I'm going to kind of relate this to bank intercounty drain. A project that is costing the individuals who live in that district their homes, right? 40 years ago, had that project been done, it would not cost what it is costing today. But 40 years ago, you didn't have the number of residents either, right? The drain code only requires five people to petition to get a project done. It's reviewed by a board, they make a decision, and then the process goes. In this case, it was 55 individuals, because it's an intercounty drain, is still not good enough. So, I will tell you in the public, we are working, and I will say with Representative Whitwer, who has been a voice of reason, her ears are open for us all the time. Chairman Mott and Ben Dawson and I went to meet with her, we have suggestions on how we think the drain code should be modified. We're working for the people, we're going to do that. We don't think it should just be five people, or 55 people. There should be a larger percentage of that community in that district having a voice, and not just getting a letter in the mail that says, you're going to owe this, and not know what's coming, because even though they send something out and they tell you, we all open our mail differently. We open our mail, and I look at something, and I say, oh, I don't need to look at that, it's, this doesn't involve me, I'm not in a drainage district. So, don't blame the residents for being upset, they went through heck and back, and they're going to continue to do that. But that's an example of government where we didn't change. That's state. State drain code needs to be changed. State drain code needs to be changed. A lot of things need to be changed. So now we're here in 2025 as a county, stuck with not having enough revenue. Do our tax values go up? Yes. Is it enough to cover the services we provide? I'm telling you, no. It's not made up. I've said it multiple times at places. This isn't a joke. It's not, we're not making it up. We're not doing it intentionally. And I don't feel we're wasting money. We look at things. There may be something that comes up that's a project for a department, an elected official, and maybe you pass it. Maybe it's grant funded. Whatever the case may be, you make decisions on an individual basis. It occurs. So the judgment on different things, you can listen to Ways and Means. I talked about solar. I get it. Listen to that. Hear what I said about solar. The one thing, and I say this again, and I'm really tired of hearing myself talk about all this stuff, but I'll continue to do it. I'll bore myself. Maybe I won't bore you. Start singing or something. We are funding things like legacy costs. Don't blame the current board. Things happened years ago. We're talking back in 1998, when nobody cared about pension. They thought, "Well, you can fund a pension. You can fund retirees' healthcare." That was something that was done back then. What should have happened, and I can tell you in 1996, when we had to go to a nine-month budget, the state had switched its budget to an October 1 to September 30 budget. The county got on board because we could adopt a nine-month budget. And it kept us, you know, we had cash, right? Is that a good way to budget, to go through things? No. But we didn't have a choice that year. And those things continued to happen. And I've said it over and over again, that we have balanced the budget, and the public may not like it, and I mean no disrespect, or to the commissioners. But it's been on the back of the people who work here, who provide the services. And that's what government is. We're not a business. A business has variables that they can control. Government is stuck with variables that are hit by them, whether it's a state mandate, a federal mandate, whatever happens. Ours are based on what the needs of the public are. If they need something, our costs are going to go up. If the state passes a mandate, if the courts receive a mandated requirement, you'll hear Chief Judge Cunningham talk about that all the time. You heard her talk about COVID. They were hit round and round. I was working with Kathy, deputy court administrator, and the administrator, Amy Etzel, constantly, challenging what we needed to do next. What can we do? The courts have to adhere to this, but the county only has to adhere to this. Time taken away. It's a lot. It's a lot to deal with. Government's not easy. Come and spend a day with any of the offices and you'll see. We failed at two ballot proposals for a county. We have to recover now from that for the public. I understand it. People are overtaxed. People are tired. They're trying to balance their own books. I don't think anyone should be mad at the public for saying no. Because they don't work here, maybe some do, but they don't understand what goes on. They can't unless they've done it. So I hear back and forth that people are frustrated. We need to let it go, and we just need to work together. Here's a thing I really want to address. And as I've said before, I do not pay attention to social media until my staffs are foolish enough, my staff is foolish enough, and I look at Logan, to tell me something because they feel I should hear about it. You heard about the Delta fireworks. And I agree with the lady who spoke. Delta did the right thing. We're not doing things as a county, as townships, as cities, to punish people who voted no. That's not the job of this board. That's not the job of the elected officials who work here. What we're doing is providing services we can afford and that we can make budget cuts to afford for the next year. So those of you who don't understand Delta and its fireworks, a big deal. Fireworks are a big deal. It's a family event. It's important for families to go. Delta Township brings in so many people. I didn't get a count today, but they bring in an awful lot of people. That creates safety concerns, not because people go there and want to commit crime, but stuff happens. And over the years, I've heard from our deputies. I could get a list, and they could stand here, and they could tell you the things they deal with. It's a lost child. It's somebody who's drunk and stumbling and can't do something, and they want to make sure they don't get in their car and drive. Our deputies hold the hands of people. That's what they do. As you've also heard, Delta Township has a contract for police services with the sheriff in this county. The way to deal with police services, when you have a contract, it doesn't sit in a bubble. The sheriff's department has always provided the Elk County, and I'm coming up with a different term, I call it Command Central, for that. They all team up together. And if you don't know this, that is the one day that no one can take off. They are all hands on deck. We bargained in their contract for the first time to try to keep people here so that we could have those fireworks. So I applaud Delta Township. People are criticizing Delta. Please stop. For the fact that they were wise enough to meet with law enforcement and determine that it may not be safe. They went through what has happened in the past, what they have to be concerned about. Number one priority, public safety. Delta's concerned about that. So don't be angry because they're not having fireworks. You should be pleased that they're making sure that they're not going to have something that then the public would say, "Why weren't the police there?" The other thing I'm going to say to that, this is true in other communities. Olivet, for an example. They have Fireman's Fest. Super fun. I lived in Olivet for 25 years and raised my kids. We used to go all the time. They have the coolest thing where you can, they actually use soap and it's like a slide, slip and slide, goes down a hill. It's fun. But the sheriff was asked this last summer to go there and provide assistance, mutual aid. That's what we do. So when the city of Eaton Rapids learned of Delta's fireworks being canceled, the city manager called up Brian Reed, Delta Township manager, and said, "Hey, what's going on?" Because the chief there has to make sure he has enough people on deck to make sure that their community is safe. So let's not fault Delta. Let's not fault the sheriff. They're doing the best they can to provide services. It's a big deal. Fireworks are fun. We'll miss them. Watch them on TV right now. That's the best we can do at this point. And I respect Delta Township for making those decisions and putting the public first on that. Those deputies are a well-oiled machine. For the very first time, Ben and I went to Delta Township before the fireworks. You've never seen anything like it. It's all hands on deck. It's amazing. They sit in a room and they debrief. Fire, EMS, police. They talk about what can happen. It's amazing. And until you've seen it, you don't understand the significance of what public safety is in a community. And we're going to lose out. Bottom line, we're going to lose out. No punishment because a millage failed. That's not what this county is about. We don't do that. You've got the Delta board members who are struggling and wondering what's going to happen. That's their job. They have to. They've relied on us. And I'll say it again, and I say it with Delta Township all the time. It's been a good relationship. The sad part about this is you're going to eliminate the sheriff's department. The people who go out and provide police services, and you're leaving a jail, that's significant. And Delta Township recognizes the fact that they have relied on the entire sheriff's department to provide public safety. So I encourage the board, I encourage the public, and I encourage Delta Township to explain that. This isn't something that we do in a bubble. They went to MSU. We had our GIS department at MSU providing services you can't even imagine. You know, uniting families or letting families know that a loved one passed away or was in the hospital. It's a team. And I say it all the time. We're just one. We're Eaton County. We're not Delta Township. We're not City of Eaton Rapids. You know, we're not Bellevue. We're one county. So we need to stop that. And I'm just going to please encourage everybody to not do that. Commissioners and the public, let's just all come together and do this. I'm talking like an elected official. Never want to be in your shoes. Don't want to do it. But that's really where we need to be. The sheriff, the prosecutor, the courts, the treasurer, the clerk, they're all trying to make sure they can continue to provide services. But they're going to be limited. And you are going to be the ones limiting their services. You're going to pick and choose. I'm not providing the dartboard. It has to be a well-thought-out process. It's not a joke, but... The other thing that I think everybody needs to understand here, and I know I'm going on a lot, you're not here as the public, and commissioners, you're not here either. You don't see the people's faces. Wow. You do. Darn it, I said I wouldn't get emotional. They're scared. They should be scared. They're all so mad because you're telling them, as a public and as a board, that they don't matter. That's what they hear. That's what we hear. That we don't matter. Darn it, Logan, you were supposed to stop me at this point because I get upset. Yeah, throw a shoe at me, yeah, something. So I want you to recognize, people are going to fight for their jobs. The departments are going to fight for their jobs. You heard from our prosecutor tonight. He has been at this board for years, year after year after year, telling the board the same thing. And it doesn't matter what board it's been, he has been saying it. That is the same thing that every single department has been saying. So we're going to have to do tough work. I just need us to do it together. And you need to realize that departments are going to be fighting and saying, "They don't need that position. Never should have provided that service," whatever it may be. But it's a bigger picture than us fighting and vying for what we need to do. Just please, let's pay attention. You need to make the decisions on this board. I'll give you information. But my task this budget round, this time that we're going to go through this, is to actually make you look at everything and make these decisions and look at the people that you represent. And that's all of Eaton County. And tell them that this is what you can provide and this is what you feel or think can't be provided. So it's going to be really difficult. I respect everybody. I respect the public for the decisions they made. Let's just work together. So this is a kumbaya moment, and I'll leave it at that. Is that good enough?
Very good.
I did pretty good not crying, but I cry every time because this is my home.
Well, it's because you care. So thank you, Controller Sobey. And that leads us up to elected official comment.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that this budget crisis has been grueling on all of us. Electeds, department heads, employees, the controller's office, and all of you. It's a grueling time. But I'd like everybody to know that department heads and electeds would have a really hard time navigating this if it wasn't for the passionate and unlimited work ethic that Connie Sobey has and how much she cares for this county. It's proven every day. She and her staff are working round the clock to try to make things work and try to figure out how we're going to survive this. I've been here long enough to have been through this two other times, but this is nothing like the other two. I lost a few staff members each time, 2008 and 2017. Those positions never come back. But this is something different, and it is exhausting and grueling. I want to thank you for all of your hours that you've put into this. Nobody will ever know, but I know you care about this county so much. Thanks.
Thank you, Clerk Bosworth. Is there anyone other elected officials?
Good evening. Daris Reinett, Eaton County Treasurer. Despite the disheartening results of the election, I and my staff continue to work and serve the citizens of the county. Recently, we've had more discussions than working with Diane Boswick's office and switching places, which will lead to increased efficiencies with her office. And that's something that's probably going to be more of a hardship to my staff because they've been there longer and more associated with that, but I thank them for that. And I'm really impressed with my staff who take every opportunity to serve people and also to improve themselves in their position. My chief deputy recently completed the second module in a training put on by the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association that will allow her to grow professionally and ultimately benefit my office and serving the county. I had another staff person who, this is actually something I was going to say for last month, but ran out of time, took place or participated in the City of Eaton Rapids Citizens Academy, which was a several-week program that went through the city government and explained the various aspects of what they do. I think it ended also a tour of the infamous Horner Mill project, which is probably worth the cost of admission. And that is something that perhaps the county should look at sometime in the future, having something similar to that. One other thing, this time of year, our focus is on preparing for the tax foreclosure sales. And we have two sales on September 18th and October 16th. There'll be information on the parcels available on our website and also through our auction partner. We had 15 parcels, which is actually a little bit lower than last year, but because of some factors that came up, we were able to reduce that to two. So those will probably work their way through the system. So hopefully that'll be resolved without having to go to foreclosure. Excuse me. And also, one of the issues that came up was the, recently, was the proceeds from the auction sale. Right now, we have eight claims from the last sale in 2024, one of which has been paid out already at this time. That was split between the mortgage company and the former owner, which totaled about $110,000. Lastly, we have, again, foreclosure is a multi-year process, and before they go to foreclosure, the property is forfeited. Right now, for 2023, we have 366 properties, but that does not mean we'll have anywhere near that amount for foreclosure. It's another year before they get to that point. And the numbers will be drastically reduced. It's been shown people come up with money to pay the back taxes or they get an extension or something of that nature. So that's just something that occurs this time of year through all the counties, just on the mortgage or foreclosure timeline. And I'd also like to thank the work of the controller's office. I know it's been very trying times, but your work is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Reinett. Good evening again. Doug Lloyd, I am your Eaton County Prosecutor. Initially, I want to thank you for passing that resolution of the grant. I've already received texts from my employees saying yea, so they are appreciative of that. Second, I'd like to follow up. You know, I've said it, I've been saying it for the last year. You know, some of y'all were here before January, some of y'all came on after January, but it's been the same discussion. And, you know, my discussion, for those of y'all who know me at all, is one to be very truthful, which has been interpreted at times to be that I'm a fear mongerer, except that everything I said wasn't fear mongering, but rather became facts. I had the opportunity to attend a chiefs meeting today, which was for all the local jurisdictions, something that has been going on for longer than the 25 years that I have been here. You know, it's a bimonthly meeting where your cities and your county sheriff, you know, get together to discuss issues happening within the county. And, you know, whether y'all, whether the community wants to believe it or not, the sheriff has, you know, always been the backbone. And I'm going to give you the perfect example. Controller Sobey mentioned it. It's been mentioned, you know, through the Delta Township fireworks. I really almost find the comments humorous anymore when I read these. And that's pathetic, but that may just mean that I've become that devoid of caring with the way people are responding because I spoke about it for a year. But people sit there and question, well, there was money put in the pot for fireworks. Well, yes, but fireworks are only a portion of it. In order for fireworks to occur, you must have EMS and you must have police in order to make sure everyone is secure. And as I heard today and as I've been advised, because I'm a member of this county community, deputies are leaving. If you haven't heard it, they are literally being recruited out of here by other departments. So when the citizens of our great counties say, well, we have funding until September, well, yeah, you do. But guess what? Free will, just like voting, is the free will to quit. And these individuals are once again leaving a community they loved, that they wanted to work in, to go get paid more. Maybe they'll have to travel farther, maybe they'll have to move, but they'll be compensated for it. So it's not so much that Delta Township is somehow foregoing their duties, it's that they don't actually have the officers to do it. Which brings me to some of the communities that y'all represent. They too are holding Yankee Doodle Days, Fourth of July Days, Fireman Fest Days. And these chiefs of police sat there, and if you think about it, our county's unique, right? These, you know, we no longer have a backbone of the sheriff, so now we're relying on Grand Ledge and Charlotte, potentially Olivet, to travel to Eaton Rapids to help them on the Fourth of July. And for the other things to happen, you know, Frontier Days in September. And they're looking at each other. And I can tell you, MSP is looking at them going, yeah, we won't be there. We'll be there for priority. If a murder occurs, we'll probably show up. But we can't help you just be crowd controlled. So these departments that have few officers, and you know the districts that you're representing, how many officers you have, and aren't fully funded themselves, fully staffed, are now trying to figure out how are they going to protect your communities for the citizens to have these wonderful events? Because, see, back in the day, when the sheriff's department was actually funded, they had the ability to be the backbone and to show up and to help these communities, which was their responsibility. But the public made a decision. And there unfortunately are consequences that come with the decision. I've been down four people. The sheriff is going to be down a lot more. He can't plug the holes in the ship that is sinking at this moment. And I feel for him as a fellow elected official, and I feel for his employees because I know all of these people. But it's something that you, as commissioners, need to go to your communities, especially. You should be going to your city hall, your city, you know, your city meetings, and explaining to them that they better look for something else if they're going to continue to want to have all these fun events. Because if you didn't pay attention, you should have, that Eaton County was the one that was backing up your local departments, and they won't be there. That's the reality of it. So when I read that, well, gosh, I paid money into a drain. Well, when you paid money into a drain, just so that we clarify economics, you paid money into a drain. It has nothing to do with the county, that has nothing to do with the sheriff's department, that has nothing to do with the prosecutor's office. That goes to a drain. So that money that you paid into a drain went into a drain. It's not going to help out with fireworks. The taxes that you pay are there to handle the services of Eaton County. But they only go so far, just as their budgets. And now, you know, they told us to live within our means. That's what I've been doing. That's what y'all have to do over the next few months. But I think it's a requirement that you go and explain to them that the things that they thought they would receive or would get help on are going to become more difficult. Your Frontier Days are going to be more difficult to do because you will only have the certain amount of Charlotte officers that you can have. Eaton Rapids will have the same issue because they will only have a certain amount of officers. I hope they can do it with two officers in Olivet for Fire Fest because that's probably all they'll get. And Yankee Doodle Days up in Grand Ledge is going to be the same way. Those are, I believe, the big ones for the summer. It's going to be a different look. I'll end with one final note, that people are asking, well, if we're losing all these officers, won't you receive less cases? I'm going to guess, as you're Eaton County prosecutor, that I will. But here's what I was advised by, by MSP. And I will challenge you to pay attention to public safety because I'm going to ask our 911 director, Kelly Cunningham, to actually look for this number of how many calls are MSP saying they actually won't show up to. Because they only have so many officers, three. Three officers working during the day, four at night. And so my cases are going to go down, but my attorneys aren't going to get a break because where are the officers going to go? To the violent crimes. That's where they're going to go. That's where they're going to show up. So the days of me being able to rest my mind and look at a retail fraud complaint warrant or my attorneys doing that are going to be by the wayside because I'm going to be spending my time dealing with violent crime. Because that's what the troopers are going to show up to. So the numbers may go down, but the violence will go up, that we will see within our community. And hopefully, we'll get with the 911 director to have those numbers for you of public safety next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Prosecutor Lloyd. Next up are Commissioner comments. What? Oh, Commissioner.
I didn't, well, number one, I am still not lonely to answer your question from last time.
You should be, though, right?
I'm a little bit lonely.
You should be lonely, actually.
There is a hole in my heart that will be filled eventually by somebody.
Yes.
And I do, I didn't get an answer to this from the sheriff at the Public Safety Committee meeting, but you recall, your officers recall the shooting that occurred at the 8,000 block of North Cochrane Road on the 22nd? Because, did this go through the state police and, or was he ran through our system? Is your office prosecuting this guy?
If I might, Chris, is that red? 8,000 block of Cochrane? You got to speak up.
I'm reading off of the sheriff's press release, and this is all the information I have is on the press release.
Is that the suicide?
No.
All right.
It was essentially someone with a firearm chasing three people.
Sure, sure, yeah. What I will say on that is it came to our office.
Yes.
We, you know, as, you know, two things happen when they come to my office. I either, well, three things. I either look at a case, I charge it. I look at a case, I deny it. Or I look at a case and go, yeah, I need further investigation. And so with this case, with what they presented us, we sent it back to the sheriff's department for further investigation. So at this time, it will be something that, you know, will be in my office at such time for me to make a final decision on. It is not there yet. Does that help?
It does, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any others? Seen none.
Thanks, Chairman.
All right, that moves us on to Commissioner comments. Any commissioners have a comment? Anything they want to share? Commissioner Pearlway?
Okay. So what I'm going to say, might not be very comfortable, but I was here during that downturn that our clerk just mentioned back in 2008, and cut staff in her office and other people's. I was here, came just back, sworn in again, January of 2017, to, again, come back to a mess that also required reduction of staff. So, and I know that I have known Connie Sobey to be a hardworking person for all of my now 15 years sitting in this chair. So, and we have other people that we have at the county that I have known all these years as well, and they're all hard workers. I know a lot of the department heads all these years. I just, I am just flabbergasted that we're in the situation we're in. People didn't believe what we had to say. So I guess what we're going to do is we're going to have to do what we don't want to do. And hopefully, we're going to come out the other side, and we're going to get some different legislations from the state, we're going to get some different changes at the federal government. Because I'm going to tell you something right now, I am not having fun. Because I ended up, in January, taking on more involvement in outside of assignments where we have boards that do nothing but help people. They're all human services. And every time I go, those agencies also work off of each other out there. They're not living in silos either. So when we can't provide for our citizens the way you want, this also rolls down into capillary Michigan Works that's laying off and restricting funds, tri-county office on aging, we can't even make a budget, capillary community services where I was at today at Capitol Day, down Legislative Day, down to Lansing, and we just didn't get any good information. We just didn't get any, we got similar to what Connie, our controller, Sobey, just talked at the same level down there today. There is no place that anybody, capillary, or, um, community mental health, community mental health, okay? They're 85% funded on Medicaid. Do you know who those people are that we're working with? That we're trying to provide services to families? I understand that if you have lots of money, you can go out and buy anything you want on the private market. But if you don't, and you need services for your disabled children, or so that people can live independently, not in an institution that we actually took away, you know, 30 years ago, which, that was a good choice, but, you know, we still have houses and things that we own. It's crazy. People do not understand. I don't know how to make them understand. And the only thing that, I sat next to this person who's HR director over to Michigan Department of Health and Human Services that's on my CACS board today for the whole morning and afternoon, and until it hits her kitchen table. But let me tell you something, it is going to hit your kitchen table. Because those are going to be your neighbors. Those are going to be the employees that have provided services to you. And I just, it's every day. I keep writing little notes to our payroll person, sorry, I'm in so many meetings. It's because we're called into specials. Specials is trying to figure out what to do. And that's the same thing that's going on here. Because our special meeting, and we would like you all to attend, watch us on YouTube, watch us on YouTube at midnight, at least to get an idea of the work that these people are doing every day. We didn't want to close our offices on Fridays. My 15 years, I never did anything like that. But now we do. So we needed, we needed the millage. And I hear people, they're looking at the Kroger grocery prices, they're looking at their car insurances going up, they're looking at all this. But you know what? The same thing happens when we operate the county, the prices goes up on the copy paper. So I don't know. I just wanted to say so, I guess. So I really appreciate all of your inputs and your hard work, and we'll do our best to do what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Haskell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't going to speak, but Jeanie made a couple of great points, and I really appreciate everything you had to say. Commissioner, thank you for saying that. You know, I took a lot of notes when we had limited public comment earlier. And one of the things that kind of struck me as important, that I hope that everyone kind of takes away from this meeting is, and I've underlined it three times here, creative solutions. You know, I, like the prosecutor mentioned, how we should be going and talking to our local electeds within our own townships or cities. I've heard a lot from mine, obviously. I would like to, I would hope that as we move into this budget hearing coming up on the 30th, that we are thinking about creative solutions, any way that we can preserve some of the infrastructure that we have, whether it be policing or other offices, that we're looking at those. I truly believe that a lot of our public will come to regret some of the letting this millage fail. So I guess I'll leave it at that. But I'm happy to obviously talk with administration and you, Mr. Chair, and flesh out some more ideas.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Haskell. Anyone, any other commissioners would like to speak? All right, I'll, no?
I'm not sure "like to speak" is really the best sentence, but feel moved to do so regardless. It really was up to the voters and the taxpayers whether or not the millage passed. And yes, we put up the idea that... and yes, we put up, uh, the idea that things ought to be funded. We put that on the ballot. The taxpayers looked at it and they decided they don't want to pay it, and I don't believe that the best response to that, or to them, is you'll be sorry, or, oh, no. They made the decision, and we need to adjust according to their decision and make things work with the resources that we have and the tax dollars that are available.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Christensen.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the residents and the community members that came out tonight. Also, a big thank you to the department heads that have spoken and addressed the public as well, and those at home watching. I had the opportunity yesterday to do a ride along for eight hours with Captain Coleman, and, um, eye opening. Very, very eye opening. As a board, I know that they're done September 30th, but if you have the chance, take a ride along. That's all I got.
Anyone else?
All right, um, I just want to say a couple of words. I just want to, I want to go back and just give you a brief history of why we did, as a board, what we did for the first millage and then the second one. When I became Chair and Controller Sobie became Controller at the same time, she came to me and said, we got a serious problem. And we kind of knew we had a problem, but no decisions were made prior to that. So we had a lot of discussions, a lot of meetings, and, uh, and we came to the conclusion that we need to go to the public. There is, this has gone on long enough. Previous boards should have done it years ago, and it wasn't because of overspending. It wasn't because of mismanagement. I know we've all heard it, other peoples have heard it too. It's been on Facebook everywhere. That's not what, um, this government, or this county government, is even capable or able to do, because we don't have that kind of margin. You hear it at the federal level, you hear it at the state level, and people assume that it's, it's government, so there must be a bunch of waste. But I have not heard one time from anywhere that said, yes, do this, change this, and it'll fix it all. That, that never came to us from anybody who ever made those comments. Now, understandably, people are hurting, and if you, if you don't have the money to pay, you know, that, that extra millage, then great. But if you're accusing the county of mismanagement money and wasteful spending, it couldn't be backed up. Not one place, not one time. That's not the case. The case is, prior boards did not go to the public with that question to them of, do you want to support the county and the services? It just kicked down the road too long, and it was time that we had to do something, and so we did, and we went to the public. Very close in the first time. Um, there's a lot of people in this room that helped get that message out and spent a lot of time doing that, and I want to thank you, I appreciate that. Failed narrowly, um, so the question was, okay, do you want to keep public safety? Do you want to fund Prosecutor's Office and Sheriff's Department specifically? Because we heard several people from the public make those comments. And so instead of the board making that decision for you, at the public, it needed to go to the public to, for them to make that decision, because, and the reason we had to do it in a special election, because time was not on our side. We didn't have, we, the funds to keep it going. So we needed to go to the public. We needed to ask them, is this what you want to keep? Is this, what kind of county do you want to have? And unfortunately, they said no, and so now we have to make very difficult decisions, and, um, that's, that's where we are, and that's how we got here. That was the reason we made those decisions that we did. I didn't feel, and I don't think the board members felt, that it was right to make that decision for the public, to just do away with public, or the road patrol. But with that, we have to make a bunch of cuts here at the county. We have to make a bunch of tough decisions, and we owe it to the employees here, and we owe it to the public to make those decisions, even if it's of those that are going to be cut, because they need to know. It's, it's just the right thing to do, and we need to do it quickly. September's going to be here fast. It goes by very fast. So on the special meeting, budget hearing that we're going to have, May 30th, it is going to be full board, and so please get here if you can, at all, at all cost if you can, um, so we can make these decisions, and we'll have future meetings as well, as we go through this process. So, um, I want to thank the employees. I know, I know it was the public that decided, but there's a part of me that feels like failed. I know that's not true, because we tried to do everything we could, spent a lot of hours doing it. So I feel for the employees and I, and, uh, sorry. So we'll make the decisions we need to make and, um, go forward, but thank you for the Controller's Office. Thank you, Board, for taking this on and, and going through this too, and, and we'll try to come together and make the best decisions we can. So with that, we'll go on to the next item. Unfinished business.
None.
Old business.
None.
New business.
None.
And that brings us to our last public, limited public comment. Again, if you want to address the board, please approach podium, and let's limit it to three minutes, please.
Again, Charter Township do not allow residential one properties to have duplexes, but they voted in favor of it. For the outlying counties, if you will, those that are underneath the county's zoning ordinance. Tonight, with the increased fees in the building department zoning, they increased the fees tonight. I just got on their website, their fees are less than ours are, so they raised our taxes. We are one county, but there are some differences. So those people voting, representing their constituents in their enclave, are raising costs of me, if I want to do business, because I live outside of that enclave. I don't know, doesn't seem fair. Limited ag is coming up. Check with your constituents, some of your township people, see if they're in favor of duplexes in limited ag zoned properties. Check with them. The people I've checked with, out where I live, Sunfield Township, are not in favor of it. Again, those people that represent their enclave probably vote in favor of it. Doesn't affect them. Why do they get a vote? Doesn't affect their constituents. Why do they get a vote? That's all I got.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Jeff Christensen, City Councilman for District One, City of Charlotte. During the first public comment, I was, I was a little taken aback by one of the comments that was suggested that the Commissioners be responsible to cover the cost of the election, and it failed. I, I thought that was horrible. This Commission did not even vote to put that on the ballot. That decision was made before this Commission was seated, so I found it strongly unfair. One other thing I just want to add, when this change goes into effect, and it's already going to happen early, because deputies are leaving, I think one of the things that people didn't think about was their insurance rates. Because once the road patrol is gone, and the state police have already made clear, they're not going to run to save the day. They don't have the manpower to do it. Our average response times are going to climb, and they're going to climb very quickly. And when our vast amount of insurance companies roll into Eaton County and start doing their risk assessment, you better believe that's going to have an effect on everybody's homeowner's insurance, business insurance. It's going to make a big difference. So I think we would have been a lot better off supporting the millage, as I think it would have been a lot less expensive than what is going to happen to our insurance premiums, so. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Deputy Administrator Ben Dawson, but speaking as a member of the public. Um, I want to just touch two points. So one, and Jeannie kind of talked about it, there's very likely going to be significant Medicaid cuts that do occur, and it will be felt. And I say that only because agencies like that, that do the type of work, it's on a reimbursed basis, when they come to a place where they're hurting, they typically come to county and ask for money. We went through that during COVID, you guys all experienced that. This will be around where you all will be in a very difficult position, because you're already making the decisions of what does the county's services look like for taking care of your core employees. So that's, to your point, will be felt. I'm sharing Connie's story, because she's asked me to, because she, she was very open. When she went through a process to adopt her two children, there was a phase of time where she could not put her, the kids on her employer's insurance, because they were still technically wards of the state, and the only way that they could afford medical care was through Medicaid. Um, and so she was just sharing that very personal, real story. And I think it's a good segue to my second piece here, which is, words matter, and I'm speaking to all of you. Our employees, our citizens, we're people, we have families, we've not done anything to deserve your contempt, and I'm not talking to anybody in the room, but I think sometimes social media has made it really easy to just say things without regard. And I say that because it's one thing to debate the value of a position, or the value of a department, or an institution like the Sheriff's Department, but when you are attacking people personally, it's repugnant. And I say that because I want us all to know, this is going to be hard enough as it is. So let's dig deep and find that character, that connection to the spirit that's always made this a great place to live. It's going to be painful, and we're all going to go through it together. So sometimes that might mean you need to call your friend and be like, hey, I see what you're doing. Cool down, man. Do you need to talk? Because our employees are going to go through a lot, and we have a hell of a job looking for a path forward with retention and recruitment. So do me a favor, help me out by remembering that we are people, and we need your help. So we've got a tough, tough road ahead, and I ask for your assistance. We will work with the budget that's been given. We will respect the will of the voters, but please don't add insult to injury on top of the tough job ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Gilman, Windsor Township. Someone mentioned earlier that county government is not business. That's accurate. I can't remember if that was the, Mr., oh, that was you. Yeah, sorry. Memory is bad, can't remember what I had for lunch. Anyway, that's, that's true. As, as a citizen, I can choose to patronize a business, pay for their services, or not. Not so much with the government, should this pass. If it passed, you know, obviously everyone would be on the hook, you know, that's a property owner for taxes. However, what, this, this lady over here brought up something interesting that I'm surprised hasn't, you know, she's willing to donate her time, animal control. That's something that I know that was brought up recently before the, uh, uh, the, the, you know, election for the millage or whatever. But I don't think there's anything that would prevent people from, if they really wanted something in particular, such as animal control, from voluntarily donating money. Now, I don't know if they can specifically earmark the money for that. Miss Sobie, you'd be in a better position to know, but really, if someone actually wants some, a service from the county, as far as I know, there is no reason why they can't voluntarily donate themselves. I know that if I could earmark, you know, money specifically for animal control, I got a hundred bucks, right now I'll do it. If I can guarantee that it'll go for animal control, I got a C note for that. Just figured I'd put that out there for anyone that's concerned that, you know, they actually really want that, and not just, oh, I want that, but if I can make everyone else pay for it.
I didn't come here prepared to speak tonight, I'm sorry, but if I fumble a little bit, uh, the young lady over there brought up about the drains, and, uh, I, uh, my wife and I worked hard our whole lives in another state, and we've only lived in Michigan. We bought a nice house and all of that about three years ago. And, uh, we bought something that would fit our budget, uh, property-wise and home-wise, and plan to live out a comfortable retirement. And, you know, your budget, and, uh, this, this property we bought fit. You open the mail, you get the, you get the gas bill, you get the electric bill, you get the common things that are 50 bucks, 100 bucks, you, you owe your share. It's all good. I opened the mail about three or four months after I lived here, and was told I owed over $30,000 for a drain, two drains, on my property. I don't know how well you people are off, but that's not a $50 gas bill or a $100 gas bill. That's, that's 30 years, if you want to, if you want to do it that way, or pay it upfront, 30 grand cash. I don't know, who, who of you have that laying around? I didn't figure on that with my retirement. So I, I'll just put it out there. I'm glad you're going to a higher form of government to look at this. And I heard that, I don't know, I haven't made an appointment yet with the Drain Commissioner, but I'm going to, and I heard he's not so available. And I'm going to find out about that, and I'm going to record every answer I get, and what time I visit with him, and everything else. I'm not angry at him, I'm not angry at you people, but that's not right. I'm saying it's not right, and something should be done about it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Amy Etzel, I'm the Court Administrator. I just wanted to speak on a couple of things, I think, with regards to the budget and where things are at with employees, and I feel like I need to speak tonight just on rumor mill that has already started spreading, um, with regards to courts and cuts that we're making. And I certainly have talked with our employees and departments that have impacted by the rumor, and certainly we are ready to make decisions. We've held positions open, the court has made no decision to cut any departments or any employees at this time, and we're still just waiting for decisions to be made and some direction from you all as a Commission. And so I implore you that the next meeting on May 30th is hopefully a, a meeting that some decisions can be made versus continuing to seek information, seek ideas. Our employees will speak to the court employees, we're just looking for direction, and it's difficult. Every meeting, I'm here at most of the committee meetings, Public Safety, the full board, the Ways and Means Committee meetings, after every one of those meetings, especially Ways and Means, when we're speaking directly with regards to the finances and the budget, I'm going back to department heads and relaying any information, and, and it's, it does get frustrating, meeting after meeting, that I don't, I don't have anything to say. I don't have any update, other than more information is being asked, potential ideas, I guess, are coming out, but there, we're in no direction of, of being able to be confident that there's a decision going to be made, and I think it was said here tonight, employees need to know. The sooner, the better, just for their own peace of mind. We have employees who are fearful that their positions- We have employees who are fearful that their positions are at risk. And so, yeah, I know that there was some discussion about departments, and we are going to certainly fight for our departments. Absolutely. Everybody wants to protect their own department, but I don't think we, as department heads, or certainly, I could speak for the judge, we're not here to fight. We're here to 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 let you know what we need, what we need to function, the employees we need to be able to do that. And unfortunately, the difficult decision is going to be all of you making a decision on what services are needed. And that's going to then impact how many employees you need to make have those services for the county. And and so I guess for me personally, I want to make sure that any court employees that are are listening and maybe will hear this, the court has not made decisions. And I and I know that they know that. I'm trying to quash some rumors that were spoken today, which are very frustrating to me. But I certainly hope that sooner rather than later, we can get some direction on where things are going with regards to the budget and how things will flush out for all departments. So thank you.
I wasn't planning on speaking either, but I wanted to just say a couple of things. I wanted to, first of all, commend each one of you for the the hard work that is required and that has already been put into this. I think that many of the efforts of this commission have been downplayed because of the unsuccessful nature of both of the last two proposals. I've also, I'm out in the community all the time. I listen to people say things that aren't true, and I try to debunk them often. There's several of you that have been on here for quite a long time, and and people like to throw shade towards that, as if you're part of the problem. I think maybe the people that were part of the problem, they're not here anymore. My thoughts and encouragement to people are that each and each and every one of you knew what you were stepping into, decided to run again. And so I'm thankful for the efforts that you guys are putting forth. I also wanted to commend Commissioner Barber for the for the plan that he's put together. I I don't guess any plan will be perfect, and I'm not sure that the how close that even is, but the effort that he put into actually putting some thoughts together and putting them on paper, I think, aren't just commendable, but required in a time like this from each one of you, to bring those, not just those thoughts, but plans to the table, so that we can come up for the best solution that we possibly can as a county for Eaton County. I'm fifth generation from here. I'm not moving. I care about this place immensely, more than any other place on earth. And I would just challenge you guys. I I know a good share of the employees that work here for the county. I think we have, like, the best employees that there are around. And so the idea of having to cut people's jobs and affecting their families is a is a is a is a high-level task. But it's something that because of the the previous boards over the last decades, like this has already previously been mentioned, as well as the mandate that's been received from the voters, significant cuts are going to have to be made. And so I want to encourage you to think about not just what's happening today, but also the future. Because we've got to look five, 10, 20, and even 25 years down the road, and try to set Eaton County up for long-term success. This is a, this is a, this is a lemon. This is a lemon kind of a thing. We've got to figure out how to make lemonade. And, you know, out of, on behalf of my friends that do work here for the county, you guys have got to come up with these solutions, like, radically quick. I hope that we would be further along, honestly, in this process with the contingency plan if this millage that we hoped would pass did not. And so I implore you guys to do the extra work that we need to in meetings like next Friday, so that real information can be communicated with the employees here, and so that the citizens of this county can realize what their government is going to be like in the near future. Again, thank you for everything that you guys are doing. God bless each one of you.
I just wanted to say a couple more things. So I have an extensive background in public safety, so from the chief of plant protection with their old General Motors days, paramedic firefighter for the Langton Township Fire, Ingham County, 911 dispatch, all this. I say this to say, when you're in emergency management, you look at it and say, we got to triage this situation. What is, what are the hot buttons? Life over land, normally? And all lives matter. So I'm talking about people. I came to speak on the ones that don't have a voice with animals. But just like you said, sir, and I don't know your name, but you said, there's things that have to be done quickly with what we're given right now. And it is sad, you know, that this happened long ago, and it's continuing to just, you know, domino, but decisions have to be made. So I'm just echoing that comment. I thought about life over land, because people are what matter the most. Of course, I'm a licensed real estate agent in the state, so land is important, of course, as well. But I still serve as a public servant. I'm with MDOT at the state level. When you think about our county and the importance of all these people, that we all have something to provide, this county. And it's going to hurt, it's going to hurt with some of these people leaving, but these decisions have to be made. And we're all sad. We're sad for you in your seat, we're sad for us, but the way things are going these past couple of weeks are just terrible. So however we can help with the animals, I already wear 100 hats, I'll wear a few more. Connie is selfless. So if you if you want to reach out to, with her research and stuff, she is amazing. We're over here on our phones, trying to mitigate other animal emergencies, you know, just because that's where our hearts at, that's where our passion's at. So anyway, I just want to close with thank you so much for what you're doing, and we hope to get some decisions soon.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Anderson. I'm a resident of the county. I'm the chief assistant prosecutor. I'm going to echo a couple of things that Ben started down the road, but I want to thank Logan. And the comments that Ben made were targeted, that the people that have been targeting Logan for the last six to eight months, it's ridiculous. I'm a lifelong public servant. This is what I've done. I worked in Branch County. Branch County lost their road patrol 15 years ago. They didn't lose it fully, they lost half of it. It's taken them 15 years to recover the half that they lost. Communicating facts seems to be difficult for any government, right? We have all these mediums. But the fact that we have Logan to try to help us, and he helps our office, he helps every office in this county, I get this impression that the public doesn't want, the people that are attacking Logan are the people that don't really want facts to be delivered to the public. They want their narrative to be the one that's spun. And it's abhorrent, and it's ridiculous. I went down the rabbit hole last night of reading the comments on Commissioner Barber's Facebook posts. I wanted to commend him. I said to me yesterday that I appreciated the fact that he tried to start a conversation with his constituents in a constructive manner, and it went to hell in a handbasket. It's ridiculous, and it affects the employees of this county. Because I get told I shouldn't read Facebook comments. It's true, but at the same point, that is the communication that's occurring right now. And that is the message that's being sent. And I feel like if we don't start to to counteract some of that message, we're losing the battle. And I will say this, I I said this at a a meeting, public safety meeting, three or four weeks, or three or four months ago, that my role as a as a as an administrator has changed drastically from my predecessors. I spend a portion of my day checking on my employees, our employees. That's getting harder. I had employees texting me at 7:00 this morning, asking about things, about their jobs. And when you read the comments about how worthless essentially public servants are, how we're overpaid, let me tell you what, we're not. We're the lowest-paid prosecutor's office in the tri-county. I could leave this position and double my salary. I also pay taxes in this county, and I buy groceries in this county, and my pay raise hasn't kept pace with the private sector in this county. So I think that to to comment a little bit on Andy's comment about pace, I appreciate it's a tough, tough haul, but you have employees that are fretting. And you have employees that don't know what July is going to bring, don't know what October's going to bring, and don't know what the next year is going to bring. And so as much as you can do, I appreciate the decisions are yours, but they affect us. And so I implore you to try to be as expedient as possible in giving guidance to those employees, because they're the ones that are really suffering at this point, because they don't have any certainty about their future. And so I I appreciate every one of you. I would not envy any of the decisions you make. I will say personally, I greatly, I started out by saying I thank Logan, I thank Ben, and I thank Connie, because they have bent over backwards to help us in what we need to get done. They do it all the time. I have never beat Connie to work. Our chief, our deputy chief was here for trial a couple of weeks ago, and he got here at 4:30 in the morning. And he literally said to me that day that he was going to send, he comes in early a lot, that he was going to send Connie a text and ask where she was, because she was not here at 4:30 in the morning. I'm being honest. I mean, it it's the reality of it. So I think that people need to understand that the it's the messaging right now, and I agree with what Ben said, the messaging to our public servants is that we are, we're not worth the ground we walk on. And that's not from you, but that's from those people in social media, and that is the media we have right now, that are conveying to those people that they're not worth it. And I think that anything that you can do to reinforce to them that they are worth it is, would be much appreciated and much needed. And so I appreciate your time. I thank you very much for this evening.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else who'd like to speak? All right. Well, that'll wrap up our limited public comment. And with that, we are adjourned to Wednesday, June 18th.